Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
It's a little after six. Looks like we have Zoom working. There was a Zoom connection. We're in the town hall lower theater. Three of the select board are present, as you can see on the screen. Sue Hammond is on Zoom and Rick hopefully will be joining us. He's on the road somewhere. So that being said, I call the meeting to order. First order is to approve the minutes of October 19th and November 3rd. They're in your packet, so I'll take a motion to do so.
I think Elijah had some questions earlier today by email about some of the items. So as opposed to me writing or reading through them, I'll let Elijah. Maybe he can update what his concerns were.
Yeah, it was just for the number three, the HPC update for 66 Atkinson Street. It didn't actually state what the motion was in the minutes.
So this is on your November 3rd meeting?
For number three on page two.
Right.
October 19th. I just thought it should have some clarity there of what it was that we were voting on.
All right, I'll ever add that. Why don't you just adopt it with that amendment? Because I believe there were two resolutions, right? You adopted one for the removal of the steeple and one for the removal of the window.
Right.
Right.
There's a bunch of typos.
Yeah, I caught those too.
Yeah, Brenda has been a little bit under the weather, so I apologize for that.
You want to correct those or just?
So we can, we can, we can approve the minutes with corrections so noted with the typos.
We will update the resolutions under item three.
So we need a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes from October 19th with corrections.
I second.
And how about November 3rd? There's two sets of minutes.
And also the minutes from November 3rd with corrections.
Second of both of those. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of October 19th and November 3rd. Any further discussion other than the typos and the motion?
The name under, on October 19th, item two, the woman's name is Sarah Lang, L-A-N-G.
Yeah, okay.
Sue, anything?
No, all set, thanks.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, no further discussion. All those in favor would say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Addition to the agenda for routine ministry matters and depressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
I don't have any agenda items to add, no Peter.
Anyone else on the board? No. All right, that being said, we'll go to public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes per person. Yes ma'am, say Jane.
Diana Jones.
Oh, okay.
Diana, could you come up maybe and grab a microphone? It's a lot easier to capture your conversation.
Just turn the mic on.
You see a red light, you're on.
Good, okay. So I'm Diana Jones. I'm here, everybody I see got the packets. I was worried that nobody got packets, but we're good. So I came just because I wanted to talk about 66 Atkinson Street and basically what's being done with the demolition and then what's going to happen after. This is basically just an introduction into kind of a bigger project that could be potential. But I'm just going to read basically what I have here, which kind of sums it all up. To the select board and whomever it may concern, I come to you today as a descendant and citizen of the Abenaki tribe, as well as a member of our beautiful community. This is, there is a great concern for myself and others about the history of our ancestors and our heritage going forward. We have seen an increase in the U.S. of rightly deserved indigenous activism and express the urgency of the acknowledgement of our own history. I'm looking to bridge the gap between indigenous community and the town while finding ways to preserve what history we have and what history that is to come. To further explain my intentions, I'm looking, I'm not looking to place blame on the town or its settlers, but to bring history, but to put history at peace with complete transparent acknowledgement of the past. Sorry. Acknowledgements of the past and move forward with a healthy form of coexistence between all cultures and embrace the importance of the Great Falls to the Abenaki tribe. I won't go through and read all of it, but basically what we're looking for is maybe a potential dig for next year to see if there's any archaeological artifacts that we could possibly find. The church is a pretty significant area and you can read through what Gail Golick, who is an archaeologist, has written, and she did also take core samples, you know, about the demolition. And my request basically is that we just take a less aggressive approach to the demolition so that way next year, maybe we can talk about an archaeological dig and go from there.
Yeah, we do have a letter here from Rick Holt requesting that we just, if demolition just stops at the, at the ground level.
Right.
Part of the contract with Hodgkins was to go below level and then level it off. So I guess that's something the manager will have to deal with Hodgkins and son, which I don't think will be a big issue with them, but they're supposed to finish the project by May, so.
Right. Well, Gail has explained in here just some simple ways of doing a less aggressive approach to the demolition and, and she can speak to any, you know, facts that you'd like or questions.
Well, I think we have to be a little careful with means and methods with the contractor because anything you deal with the contractor and you change his means and methods means money. And I'd be very cautious. I would caution the board that if we're going to do a change in means and method, that we would have to get a significant time delay in order to be able to get that costed out. And that's also going to impact your overall costs because he's doing this as an off-season project. So you have a timeliness factor to consider here as well, so.
So if they want to do the dig in the spring, it would, it's going to cause issues?
It depends on how much it requires areas to be undisturbed because he's going to have a pretty large amount of equipment on that site.
Right.
This is actually, if there's still time, Gail actually could speak on that subject if you'd like for a moment.
Come on up the table.
Come on up, Gail. Should we just exchange or?
Sarah, there's another microphone right here. All good. Just easier to hear you guys when you're on the mic.
Okay. And so this is all the information that I wrote up in the packet as well. And we, yesterday Diana and Walter and I went out to the site with permission from Scott pickup. He knew we were going to be there. And it was, I just, as an archaeologist, we went, is it not working? The light was on. Okay. And so basically all I did, nothing was an intrusive survey of any, to any extent, but I just took soil samples. And it's just this little device where you push it into the ground and it comes up with a core sample. So you can see the layers of soil and if and when places are disturbed and whether we have intact soils, because intact soils mean intact potential archaeological deposits as well. And so there were a few areas that I tested and I have a map included in here that shows where I did the, there were six total. And just based on what I was able to find, we went in the basement and looked there too. And it looks pretty disturbed in the basement, as you would expect. It's dug down way into the ground. And then the other four samples were done on various parts of the, of the, the rest of the plot. And there were for any of the area that was done, like outside of that little parking area that has the sure pack, that, that I couldn't get the probe into because of the sure pack, but the other areas towards the back in the west end of the parcel looked like there might be some intact soils there. So all we really, we, we don't want to make it a big, a problem for the town or for the contractor or anything like that, or try to delay the demolition. And basically what I suggested wouldn't really impact what they're doing, it's just the idea of, of keeping it, keeping a light touch on it as opposed to digging big, big gouges into certain areas if they can pull things out, especially in and around the foundation, instead of doing big lateral excavations if they can just be careful to pull the walls into the middle and then scoop them out as they had intended to do from the, probably from the beginning anyway. And then in the other parts of the, the site, to just minimize the amount of digging down into the soil that they do, whether it's removing of the planters on the west side instead of just bulldozing it aggressively if it can be, if they can just be scooped out and leave the ground surface as intact as possible. That's really all we're, we would be suggesting. And of course, these are just suggestions. There's, you know, we're, we're just asking. And it's obviously up to the people making the decisions to, to decide whether that's reasonable or not, but we just thought we would show that it, it doesn't have to be a big delay. It doesn't have to be a lot of, even any extra money. It's not altering removal of, of anything like that. It's just trying to keep the impact of the soils on site as, after the demolition as intact as possible so that in the future, if, if a grant can be obtained to do a systematic archaeological excavation, that that will be preserved so that it would, so that they can do that in the, in the future. No, no, well, we went in and looked yesterday. Yep, and it's disturbed going down. We were just hoping that the lateral disturbance could be minimized as much as possible, that's all. And the sure pack would, the sure pack wouldn't be an issue as well as long as the removal of the sure pack wasn't too aggressive. Right, yeah, just. You know, to keep kind of what's underneath still fairly intact.
It's really regrettable that, that this is brought up so late in the day. I mean, the demolition of that building has been slated for a long time. It really makes it very hard on us.
Right.
Now, you know, just days away, literally, from when this is supposed to begin. I mean, I, I know it to, to our minds, it sounds really easy. You just, don't dig down that deep. But I think what Scott is saying bears consideration because they probably have a methodology that they expect to use, which is the quickest and fastest and messiest way it could be done. I've watched them take down a building across the street from me and it makes up a hell of a mess and they just like gouged it all up. So it's really a shame that this wasn't brought up months ago.
I wish I would have thought of it way earlier. Really do.
Yeah, I do too.
It's a pretty, it is a pretty significant area archaeologically, considering, you know, what we see that Gail has mapped out where there's burial sites and everything. And again, like Gail said, this is just us asking if, you know, if we could try to reach out to them and ask them not to do so aggressive and if it becomes a huge issue, we really don't want to step on any toes or prevent this from happening. It's just if we can, and there's that possible chance, we would love that. If there isn't.
Yeah, it kind of breaks, personally breaks my heart that we weren't given some time to negotiate with Hodgkins and, and have this, you know, as part of our arrangement
Yeah.
for six months ago, you know?
And maybe this is just the opportunity to get people to be thinking about that for the future, any other demolition projects that come up. An archaeological component maybe should be just part of the, the process going forward and.
Probably everywhere in this town, actually.
It absolutely should. This is, there are burials all over Bellows Falls historically, so it would, it would be in the town's best interest to, in, to, you know, to start to consider that just as part of the natural.
Of course, yeah.
Planning process of this kind of stuff.
Yep.
Is there any chance that we can check to see if this is possible? And if it's not, then?
Well, don't ask me. Ask our manager.
Two concerns, I think. First of all, we can certainly ask, but at that point, the contractor has ownership of the site, right? We've given him full control as of December 1st. The second consideration you have to concern yourselves with is that we have not done subsurface soil investigation. Old buildings and churches of that era probably burned coal. You probably have arsenic in that soil somewhere, I would bet, because of the age and just the, you know, the, how people heated their buildings back in that, in that day. So anything that you would want to do after the building was down, you would have to definitely do phase one to make sure that you had a subsurface evaluation done, to make sure you weren't disturbing an area with arsenic, putting, you don't want to put anybody at risk. Certainly we don't want to put the folks that are digging at risk and we don't want to put the town at risk for liability. So there are some considerations here. And all that impacts timing.
Right.
Yep, and I'm just curious if the, if there is potential in those sites that isn't part of, I, just because I don't know, that's not part of the protocol to do that sort of testing for potential things like arsenic?
Well, we only did the stuff in the building that was potentially airborne because that was the first hazard. The next hazard will be subsurface, so that'll be the next area of investigation. So the board will have to approve that. We haven't even gotten contracts or even put out proposals yet for that.
That stuff is really costly. I know because I'm on Wyndham region on, we do all out the money for it.
That's a tough, arsenic can be a tough one to do.
Tens of thousands, many tens of thousands of dollars just to test.
I think maybe what might make some sense and try to balance of, of interest here is if we do have an opportunity on that next phase to do subsurface evaluation and we're able to then show that there is not arsenic on site, maybe you could delay any additional activity on site and give some time for an excavation at that point. At least you would be protected from some liability. And it would also be protecting the folks that are, you know, doing, doing their work too. I mean, nobody wants to get exposed to underground chemicals.
Sue, comments?
No. But yeah, I mean, I agree if, if it's at all possible not to interfere with the plans going ahead to take it down as carefully as possible, not to dig onto the ground. I agree that would be a good thing to do moving forward, but understand the constraints.
Further comments?
Is this, this is public comment?
Want to get a mic? Yeah.
Are you going to talk about this on your agenda?
It was not supposed, it was going to be in the manager's report.
In his manager's report, probably.
But since it came up, we're into it now, so.
Question, comment about the same property?
So hearing these developments and then I'll just go back to last week because enough people have, have asked me and I've gotten several different answers, so I'll come here on camera and they can hear the answer. As far as possession of the property and the material in the property, last week when the window was removed, the town was in possession. And, and so it's going to be like a three-part question. And was the town the one that made the agreement? In fact, was there a contract made with any of these other several parties involved? Assigned contract? Certificates of insurance? Policies and procedures including blocking the lane of a state highway? Normal things that would happen in any construction project that come, come in front of this board, where all of those things followed? And if so, where could, where could I find those?
So most of that activity that took place, took place in an expedited fashion and it was done through the Historic Preservation Commission. The board was only aware of it from the standpoint of that there was an effort to be made to try to circumvent the previous proposal for the removal of the $8,000 that was appropriated. They found a, another contractor who had a better price. We had equipment. We had tried to do some things with town forces that we weren't able to assist, so that grew out of that process. It was not done as a bid project. It was just simply a verbal contract that was followed up after the removal.
What about insurance? Like the reporter was inside that building that day and I'm learning.
Any contractor has liability, general liability for, for a project. So it was just a general liability. We did not ask them to name us as an additional insured.
So if a news reporter was inside that building, they, walking around that building, taking pictures or asking questions, they'd be covered under whose insurance?
If anybody's walking on that property up until December 1st, they're under our general liability insurance. We might have an opportunity to, to subrogate under a third party if there was a contractor on site, but ultimately the responsibility is on the owner and the owner is the town.
And so, and no one from the town was, was present that day until one employee showed up halfway through the project?
We did not have a project manager on that, for that site, for that day.
So that already happened and I don't, I just hope that we learn. It sounds like there's more development and like was just stated, you know, for the future, moving forward, it seems like we've always followed certain procedures and it seems like a lot of them were forgotten about, whether it's time sensitive or not. I am a safety guy and I'm a taxpayer of the town of Rockingham, so it's, if, if the town is liable for someone's mistake, ultimately there'd be a much bigger problem.
Gary, do you have a response? I thought you were trying to throw your hand up there.
Nope, I was just going to say that there was a health insurance certificate from that day, that the contractor did have a certificate of insurance.
We can't hear Gary.
You kind of come to the mic.
No, just that the, the contractor did produce a certificate of insurance, not really relevant. I dropped my hand as Scott was talking because he, he covered everything.
Okay. Any further comments? Nope. All right, manager's report.
Okay, are we done with 66 at this point? I think there was some other, any other feedback from the conversation from earlier? No? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I have one, one more.
I'm sorry.
On the recent development.
Sure.
We have a signed contract with the contractor.
Or the demolition contract? Yes.
And you would entertain a change of order to this? Isn't, isn't this time sensitive and?
Well, the issue in the contract is really the date that they take control. So the only thing that we would do is, is meet on site and ask if there's possibility that they could be, try to preserve some areas if possible from disturbance. But knowing how you're impacted by estate highways, you've already pointed out, by utilities and by schools and sidewalks, it's going to be a tough site to work on. So I'm sure that they'll have to keep all those things in consideration, but we could certainly ask them to try to keep that in consideration as well. And then the next thing after demolition, once the property's turned back over to the town, would be to do the subsurface to make sure there's no other contaminants in the soils. But that won't be till later in the spring.
Okay, manager's report.
Thank you, so there's been boring activity that you guys have noticed through Gannell Street and will continue as part of the design considerations for the New Depot, street bridge and pedestrian bridge. So you'll see activity this week continuing through next week. We are still arguing with our friends in New Hampshire DOT about restoration of the current arch bridge project, so we feel that, you know, there's been additional damages done to the town's roads based on some of the road closures and other problems we've experienced over the summer. So if we have to escalate our disagreement, I'll let the board know and we can decide how we want to go forward with that. It's a little bit awkward because it's a project that we're not necessarily signatories to because it's Vermont DOT and New Hampshire DOT. But I think there is some room for us to negotiate some relief from some of the damage that's happened since Route 12 closed. So I'll keep you informed as that goes forward. Those are the only primary things at the moment, so the rest, we have a long agenda, so I'll keep it, keep it, keep it simple.
Any questions about? All right, we'll move on to the agenda and just note that in your packet, there is a certification that Kathleen Nehock has been named as a certified Vermont clerk. So we will congratulate her on that fact.
Yeah, it's a process that takes, you know, a significant amount of effort and there is a whole training and, and professional development process that goes with it. So it's a feather in her cap to get that certification. Just wanted to bring it on, on the agenda and acknowledge her effort and congratulate her on that.
So noted. Okay, moving along, application for use of alcohol on municipal property. In your packet, there is a application from Brian Joyer, PK's Presents, another promoter in town, it looks like, for a comedy performance to be done at the Opera House on January 20th of '22. So that's coming up. They're asking for use alcohol on municipal property. So I would entertain, if so desires of the board, to take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Here, a second.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a alcohol, use alcohol on municipal property on the January 20th of '22. Any further discussion? It is a comedy performance and everybody wants to know, at least that's what's noted here. Hearing none? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Okay, I voted aye not to say nay. Do we have a com, you got one coming around? Secondly to that, there is a application for entertainment permit also that's in conjunction with that. It's same thing, it's a, PK's Presents, it's a, on January 20th. It's comedy and music performances, projected attendance is 550, noise minimal, comedy show, outside production with lights and sound. We get a little bit of clarity on that? Do we know what, what they're planning? Are we having a hoedown out street or what?
No, I think it's just a general permit for the, for the show, so there shouldn't be any real residual impacts from that, Peter.
Okay. So I will take a motion to approve an application for the entertainment permit for PK's Presents.
I move that we approve the entertainment permit application for PK's Presents for January 20th?
Yeah, 20, yep.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a permit for entertainment permit on, says 120, but I believe it's 120.
It's the same.
Yeah, so any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor would say aye.
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 Motion carries. Historic Preservation Commission appointment to fill the vacancy and that is Diana Jones. There is a letter in the packet for it. She's being recommended by the Historic Provision Commission, so take a motion to approve Diana Jones to fill the vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission.
I move that we approve Diana Jones to fill the vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve, appoint Diana Jones to Historic Preservation Commission, any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Number four, appointment of Janet Bryan to the Rockingham Planning Commission for a term of 11/16/21 to 6/30/25. You have a motion? There's a letter in the packet and a motion.
Uh, I move that we approve Janet Bryan for the position on the Rockingham Planning Commission to fill a three-year planning commission term.
Here, a second.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to appoint Janet Bryan to the Rockingham Planning Commission starting November 16th, 2021, to fill a three-year planning commission term that ends June 30th, 2025. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay? Aye? Motion carries. Number five is appointment of Patrick Moynah to Development Review Board for a term of approval of 12/1, 21 to 12/1, 24, uh, 12, yeah, 12/1, 24, three-year term. It's also in the packet, there is a motion, suggested motion.
I move we appoint Patrick Moynah to the Rockingham Development Review Board starting December 1st, 2021, to fill a three-year term that ends December 1st, 2024.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to appoint Patrick Moynah to Development Review Board for a term of, of, uh, 12/1, 21 to 12/1, 24. Further discussion on the subject? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Let's see, signature page for the entertainment permit here.
Yeah, I don't think there is a separate one, Peter, so I'll just-
All right, well, I'll add to the pile. Number six, approve, approval of highway access permit for 100 Westminster West Road. In your packet, there is a application, and there is also a map-
There's a sketch.
Showing property of Jason Snell. I'm trying to picture that, I'm not sure exactly where that is. I know it's out, just, is it beyond the trailer park, or this side of it?
I thought it was beyond.
Okay.
It'll just be upgrading an existing, uh, right-of-way of sorts, right?
Right, it was basically a field road, now it'll be upgraded to a higher standard for an actual driveway, so not changing, just, basically, it's gonna be an upgrade.
Okay, take a motion to approve the highway access permit for 100 Westminster Road?
Uh, I move that we approve the highway access permit for Westminster West Road.
Go here, a second.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve a highway access permit for 100 Westminster West Road, property of Jason Snell. Further questions, discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor would say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. You got a signature, would say aye?
There is one on the, the last page, Peter.
Yeah, I'll sign this one then.
I can give you mine if you'd like.
It's all set to go, I got it right here. Okay, number seven would be grant updates. TE Grant School, Atkinson Street, public meeting, Ursa Trail Grant application, train station update. It's like Gary's up again.
It's Gary Fox time.
So the, the Transportation Alternatives Program has a requirement for a public meeting, so this is the, the public meeting. For that grant, a projected cost of $55,000, of which $44,000 are federal Transportation Alternative Program funds, and $11,000 are local share. And the project, it's a scoping study for the intersection of School Street, School Street Extension, and Atkinson Street. And, uh, basically, with the Transportation Alternatives Program, they will fund the actual implementation of the intersection, but they, they really, the projects are generally $200,000 to $300,000, and they do wanna see that due diligence has been done by the applicant, and that we've examined all alternatives. And, uh, right now, Route 5 is a, it's a major collector from a couple of interstate exits from New Hampshire and high-volume traffic, also alternate route of truck traffic for Route 5. And, uh, School Street to School Street Extension is high pedestrian traffic with K through 5, and parents walking to school, as well as, uh, and around-the-block drop-off and pickup. And right now, it's just, there's, um, been a four-way stop forever, so this is exploring, given the, the volume of pedestrian vehicular traffic, what makes sense in terms of complete streets, crosswalks, signalization. So they, they will present a, a few alternatives in the scoping study, and they'll, they will additionally take into account, uh, potential redevelopment options at 66 Atkinson Street, so what, what is the access there like? If there was, uh, some applications, like say, a childcare require an entrance and an exit, so that might be something like entering on Atkinson Street and exiting on School Street, mixed-use commercial would have different requirements, so, so they'll look at the, the whole picture, including different scenarios for redevelopment at 66 Atkinson Street. Environmental factors, they'll, uh, consider that, you know, we've looked at the arsenic issue, although actually, for, I'm sorry, for the, uh, for the intersection, that's a, it's a separate issue. So this'll look at a, a rights-of-way review, and then, including in the deliverables, a cost estimate for project management, design, and construction, which we will then go in the following year with an implementation application for those results. So it's basically the information for the public, public meeting. Take any questions?
This part is important, because by doing this first piece, while it does seem to be a little bit heavy in terms of a lot of planning and engineering, it opens up the doors to, to other federal monies that we can use. So you have to do these transportation alternatives as part of the NEPA process on any of these federal projects, so you'll have all that done, which will put you a step ahead as you get into grants and trying to get this project funded. So, I know it seems like it's a significant amount of money upfront, but I think in the, in the long run, this will be a small investment, I think, towards a, hopefully, a successful redesign and an intersection that'll be improved for people that are taking their kids to school, drivers, and just in general, so I think it's a reasonable investment.
Okay, let's get a motion on the floor, then we can go into discussion. There is a suggestion on the, on the packet and the letter, someone wants to take that up? It's like you're gonna earn your may today.
Uh, I move that we, uh, accept the Transportation Alternatives Grants, uh, application as proposed.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Oh, this here, okay. I move that we authorize the municipal manager to execute a support letter from the governing body of the applicant municipality, and an acknowledgement and source of the local match and commitment to future maintenance responsibility for the future completed construction project.
Go here, a second.
I'll second.
You guys are earning your money tonight, I guess. Okay, now we'll go into discussion phase, uh, any discussion on this subject? Seems like a viable process, the only question I would have is where we find 11 grand, I probably should find it somewhere in there.
I can't hear Scott. Yeah, I can't hear Scott.
He had it on.
Is available to you in that debt service fund that we did not spend on some of the 66 Atkinson Project, so we could certainly allocate some of those monies.
Okay, any further discussion, questions?
How short are we of getting funds for implementation? Is that pretty, pretty certain that we would be able to carry through with, you know, implementation?
So these grants are, are always competitive. In the, the webinar with V Trans Official who runs the program, indicated this was a very competitive project, but the scoping project would really be crucial to be, to being competitive in the implementation phase.
We won't, we won't have any idea what implementation's gonna cost until after the scoping project.
You'll get some rough numbers in the Transportation Alternatives, they'll put together some real-
Right.
You know, it won't be real, but it'll be close.
Right, so that's, that's what the scoping's gonna help us determine.
Correct.
Any further discussion, Sue, anything?
All set.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to, to approve, authorize the municipal manager to execute a support letter, blah, blah, uh, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Let's go into the Ursa Grant, Trail Grant.
So the, the Ursa Grant application, you did, you heard about it last month. It's basically, it's a first-time program called the Enhancement of Recreation, Stewardship and Access Grant. And it's, um, the first time they have money to actually build trails, trail construction. And, uh, the phase that we were in last month was a letter asking for interest, and then they weeded down, they got a lot of applications, and then they invited some applicants to put in a full application. And so, uh, we were invited for the full application, and we have a, a study from a design builder, who did a site visit, scoped out the, the land and the topography, and, put together a proposal for, for building the trail that goes from where the, uh, the Bells Falls Historical Society Riverfront, uh, Riverfront Park and Trail System ends, where it terminates by the wastewater treatment plant, to build the trail around the wastewater treatment plant, up the bank to the Liberty Mill, and along the easement of the Liberty Mill parking lot, outside of that, along the bank to Paper Mill Road, where the Williams River comes in. And, um, there are easements secured for all sections of this trail. The total cost comes in at $106,050 to build the trail. This is a, a 100% application, so they do not look for match funds. And we, we did just, uh, on the week, we did just get the, the full proposal with the maps and the, so they, they were not included in your packet, but if, I do have, uh, ones that could be looked at, or if there were specific questions, could put it on the screen.
This is extending in current public right-of-way, we're not asking for any additional acquisition of right-of-way.
Correct, yeah.
Which I think is important, so this is simply building the physical infrastructure for another section of connectivity.
Yes, and, and so these plans have been in place for, for a decade, and the easements were secured long ago for all sections, the wastewater treatment plan section, the, the land between there and Liberty Mill, and the Liberty Mill easement, were all secured long ago, and we're now getting to the point where the other trail is completed, interpretive, and kiosk signs are being worked on, and this next segment of trail can be constructed.
Yeah, I think, if anybody isn't, isn't familiar with the, with the topography down there, the cost, I, I think, is because it's, it's a steep slope.
Yeah.
And it's got to be sort of leveled, it's, it's barely walkable now, because it's so steep, but where the easement runs, around the sewer plant there, it needs, it's gonna have to be, like-
Yes, leveling, gravel, steps on steep, steeper sections, yes, yeah, there's a, a pretty involved construction for, as far as trails go, for this segment.
Well, yeah, it's not just a matter of, you know, cutting down some brush, you know, going through there, so that, that's, that's, that's a lot of money, but if we get the grant, we pay for it, right?
Yes.
There's no match, yeah.
So, what do you need, do you need a motion to proceed with the application?
Sure, yeah, that would be, that would be great. We don't need any appropriation.
Authorize the manager to sign any paperwork?
That would be great.
Yes.
I move that we approve the application and-
Authorize the manager.
Authorize the manager to sign any necessary paperwork that goes along with that application.
Go here, a second.
I'll second.
And Sue, motion's made and seconded, uh, do you have any discussion, question?
All set.
All set? Okay. No further discussion, hearing none, uh, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Train station update, timeline purchase, et cetera, et cetera. Gary, you're still on the docket.
So, the Wyndham Regional Commission approved a Phase 1 environmental assessment and a hazardous materials assessment, and so the Wyndham Regional Commission does the, the RFP, and manages the, the environmental specialists that do the work, and, um, before COVID, the annual meeting before COVID, a little over two years ago, the, the town annual meeting, uh, the, the town body approved some funds towards studies for the train station, and during the following year, staff secured matching grant, uh, for a total of $25,000 for feasibility for the train station that would scope out the, the costs for redevelopment and maintaining historic preservation of the building, where it might be split up for, uh, for a private business to operate the part that wasn't necessary to be in Amtrak and Greyhound service. So that, uh, process was slowed down a little from pulling together all the, the pieces with the state, and they're being willing to, uh, lease the land that the station is on, but the, short story is that the RFP went out, we have three architectural design firms that, uh, have got back to us and participated in site visits and a pre-bid conference, so Benwell Architects out of Lebanon, uh, he's, knows all, all this stuff, Benwell Architects out of Lebanon, Austin Design out of Brattleboro, and VHB out of South Burlington, same folks doing the Depot Street Bridge are all submitting proposals for the project. We expect to award, uh, in December 15th, and so both the environmental hazardous materials analysis and the feasibility study will be done during the spring. And, uh, and the feasibility includes identifying the, the funding sources, the, uh, ownership structure recommendations for working with the, um, private operators that will support the operating costs of the building, so it doesn't fall on taxpayers, yet the town can still ensure that the waiting area portion of the station stays in public transit in perpetuity. So USDA Community Facilities Grant is eligible towards purchase of the train station, Vermont Community Development Program Implementation Grant is eligible for that, and for the renovations, which is the expensive part, both of those programs are eligible, and additionally, the state has indicated that they would include our station in- And additionally, the state has indicated that they would include our station in their FTA application for that, the infrastructure funds from the recent $1.3 trillion infrastructure program. So that goes to the state. They apply for grants to the FTA. And if the, if the town owns the train station, it is then eligible for this grant, and the, the state has indicated they would include our project in their application. So there'd be those three sources of funding in addition to local fundraising by nonprofits to help with any differences or match funds. Yeah, so that's what the outlook looks like over the next couple of years.
What, what's the cost to buy it? Do you know?
It's, it looks like around $250,000.
The town would have to spend $250,000.
Well, so, so those pieces are, they are under negotiation, and those, that's where the, the community, USDA Community Facilities Program would contribute a grant, and the VCDP would contribute a grant. So the town wouldn't be, wouldn't be paying $250,000. There would be some local share to grant. Yeah.
And that, that includes, what, you, you said three buildings, Scott?
On that site currently.
Well, so there's the, there is the, the train sta, the passenger station. There's the potential of the freight building, which the, the state owns, including that in the project, and the gravel parking area alongside the, which is another structure. It's not a, a third building, but the given third part of the project. Yeah.
So you just mentioned there'd be some local grant? I mean, the local participation on a grant process?
It's not clear what that is yet. We, we will, that piece will become clear over the next, next couple of months.
Okay.
So this is, this is an update of where it stands now, which is in the early processes of feasibility study and environmental study, and even earlier process of the purchase negotiation, the amount and timing of that.
And we haven't spoken in depth about options, but you did have an article in a previous town meeting for the local share for the first phase of this process. And so it would make sense at some point, if we have to have a local share, to potentially have that as an article, if we're able to get it done in time for your budget and for consideration for town meeting, it certainly is an option.
Yeah, it's a historical fact, though, this, when this came up before the last time, we had a, a article on the town morning for a town meeting, and it was shot down because the, the feeling was the town did not need to own the train station. Nobody wanted the town to own the train station. Gary, you must remember that.
I, I do, and that's why it's remained derelict and deteriorating for 15 years. It was, and why we weren't able to apply a couple of million dollars in earmarks that were designated to the project. And hopefully, after seeing what's happened, so, so the, the Methodist Church, which is coming down on December 1st, Robertson Paper Company, which came down two years ago, the community, very upset about those, a lot of angst about them, a lot of protest, a lot of, you know, why aren't we saving this? And they're nearly impossible to save now. In each of those cases, if that, that effort had been made 10 years earlier, the buildings would have been saved. And this train station, 15 years ago, when, when this was in play, the building was in pretty good shape. At this point, we're, we're at that place that Robertson and Methodist Church were 10 years ago. If, if we don't do something with it now, it's going to end up going the way of those other two buildings. This, this is the exact point where we've all been saying, well, why didn't we do something earlier? Why are these coming down? So we, we have the opportunity to do it now with the train station, and ideally, that will be enough impetus to gain the support it needs.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Just, it's interesting that the railroad is not interested in doing anything with that building. They own it currently, I assume.
Yeah, Vermont Railroad.
That being said, Gary, Brattleboro owns the one in Brattleboro, correct? I think the town bought that one or are in the process thereof, I think. Are there any other towns along the line of, of, which one, the White River?
So the, the town did own part of that. The state purchased it. The, the town operates it, but the state purchased it because, not for the building, but there was land around the station that went with it, that the state needed for various operations. So the, so the state of Vermont owns that station. But, but they, they do have the town, they do lease it to the town to operate as a passenger station. The, the thought for the state is that they're investing a lot in mass transit. Amtrak specifically, they're working really hard. They basically fund Amtrak service in Vermont and, and beyond to bring people to Vermont and to bring Vermonters elsewhere. They're doubling down on that with adding a Vermonta train, which will make two round trips per day through here. And it, what, what happens is, when, when we talked to them a few years ago about the train station, they were adamant that we don't want, so a nonprofit could accept the federal grants and do the same community facilities grants, but with, with the mass transit, they were adamant that they didn't want a nonprofit that could come into hard times, go, you know, fold in three years, change their line of business, to be the owner of the transit part of the station. They wanted that security that a municipality could give, that the, the town's going to be there, and the station will stay in public transit. They, they really need to know that to work in these federal infrastructure grants. And it, it's important that the town does that as part of our regional economic strategy, travel, tourism. It's all, all part of the same package.
It's interesting they worked that deal out in White River and not, you know, Brattleboro or here possibly.
Yeah, they didn't want the station in Brattleboro, but, but Byron owned the station and acres and acres around it that they need for freight rail, for moving other products around, and it's a different situation.
Yeah, that being said, though, going forward, I think people need to keep in mind that if we lose the train station, we lose train, you know, access to trains and transportation therewith. So just something to keep in mind when this comes up again. Bonnie, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it's okay. I mean, I, I was just going to say, it, this is a step-by-step kind of thing, you know, and it seems like you get to a certain point, the town has to own it, or we just can't go any further, right? We just won't be in line to get the money to restore it unless the town owns it. So, I mean, I think we need to really do some public outreach and explain this to people because it sounds like, oh my God, $250,000, you know? But I, I think it's, I think it's important that, that we, people understand exactly what this, what these steps are and why that's important. And I, I think it's really good of you to point out that how everybody's freaking out about 66 Atkinson Street. We've known for years this day was coming, and at the last minute, everybody's like, oh, God, aren't you awful? Don't you care? You know? So we don't want to repeat that with this train station. So I just wanted to insert a little ranting there.
Okay, any, what do you need, Gary? Do you just consensus to move forward with this?
Yes, sure, it's, yes, that would be great.
The board wanted to do a con, we don't need a motion, because you're not taking any action, so.
Right, yeah.
We just need a consensus to.
Just sense of the board, yeah, what do you think?
Consensus to let Gary, you know, let them proceed trying to find the avenue.
Absolutely, yeah.
Sue, you're on the board? Yep, I guess you got your travel.
Yeah, I agree, especially since there's money in this transportation bill for Amtrak, and we might be able to finagle something out of that eventually.
Right.
I think that's a huge component here.
Okay. Thanks. All right, here comes the fun part, guys. Review Equipment Fund and Debt Schedule. Your packet, there's lots of numbers.
Lots of numbers.
You think 250 was scary, look at these.
250 is fun. It goes up from there. So just a couple of things, since we had last talked, I know that we had looked at, so I'm looking at the one memo that I gave to you called Town of Rockingham Equipment Fund, and it just shows over a period of multiple fiscal years, just what we had spent money on, some had been outright purchases, some that we had purchased with debt. We've been trying to catch up on that debt and then have some opportunity to see if we can't use that transfer from highway, which is the annual allocation of the 275, to try to keep our equipment replacement schedule somewhat upon, somewhat consistent. Because I know in the past, what's happened is we've taken these five-year notes, and then we start backing up and backing up, and we've, we've run, we've run out of money at certain points with paying off previous year's allocation. So we did not take a note last year. I'm not proposing that we take a note next year. What we would like to do potentially is, we only have, because of the supply chain crisis, which is very interesting, the materials that we ordered and expected to have available this winter, at the earliest now, they're telling us we won't see till March, and more than likely beyond March. We've talked about a, we have two potential snow trucks that need replacement in the fleet. We did buy, you remember, we bought a used one, which we now have in the fleet, which we'll use this winter. But we need to put another one on to make sure that we continue that cycle. One of these plow, you know, one of these fully outfitted with sanders and plows and in a cabin chassis is going to run you anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000. So you can see that that eats up the vast majority of your equipment fund for a year, just replacing one snow truck. We have options we can look at and talk about as we go forward in the budget. You can see last year, the debt service, we paid 151 out of this account. This year, we're paying roughly 98,000. So we are paying off some of those previous notes, so that's a positive. But we are running into, for example, we need to replace one of our loaders. Loaders right now, if I put in an order today, they tell me it's 18 to 24 months for delivery, which is hard to fathom, but that's what, that's what we're being told. So at some point, we might have to take into consideration putting in an order, knowing that we might not be receiving it or paying for it in another two budget cycles. But if we wait, I don't know how much longer the supply chain problem's going to continue. It's anybody's guess. It seems like it's extending, it's not condensing. So it's a little bit of a concern and something that we'll have to work through when we start talking about tax rates and final budget numbers and just what we want to spend money on. I did put together just a brief memo for you to look at, because there have been some projects that we had previously discussed. Just wanted to put them all on one piece of paper so you can see. I'll just run through a couple of them real quick. They're, they mostly deal with, with buildings. In the town hall, we had talked about, we do have a grant for some electrical upgrades for the theater. We're going to have to do some additional work in upgrading our electrical infrastructure to support the new theater lighting, the updates to the emergency lighting and the theater lighting, and then some other lighting in the panel. So that 25,000 is going to get eaten up fairly quickly, and we'll still need some additional monies to supplement that total upgrade on the electrical. The roof, we're still working with contractors to make a decision on how we want to go forward. We've done patches in various locations. Some of it's been successful, some of it still has some issues. Looking at the last proposal, we had roughly, it was 450,000 to do the entire roof with the new membrane. Given where we are with the pricing, we, we put about a 20% addition onto that. That's where you can see where we came up with that roughly $600,000 number. That's one of the items that we could potentially talk about as we go forward, if we want to look at options with ARPA or other types of funding. That might be a potential. The Southern Storefront is a fairly small project, but it's something that we have to get done this year. The Windows Project, those started back in 2019. We had a contractor, he had started the work. Unfortunately, he has not been able to return to work, and at this point, I don't think he's going to be able to finish out his contract. So we're going to have to go back and rebid the work for what's, what's still left, given the numbers that we looked at from the previous 2019 proposals and what we think we still have left to do. That's probably about a 30 to $35,000 number to finish the Windows Restoration Project. Brickwork has been looked at. Like any time you get into pointing and brick work, you can, you have a wide range there. That's why I gave you a 50 to $75,000 number, because once you get started, you find more problems. And, you know, the exterior of this building takes a tremendous amount of water freezing. So it's something that we need to do to keep it in good condition. And then finally, just the HVAC, we've been having ongoing problems with our boilers here. You guys remember how cold it was in here last winter? We still have more work to do. I'm hoping that this 20,000 will hopefully fix the problem. Right now, it's tolerable in here, but as it gets colder, we have to kick on the second boiler, we, we start to have problems. And then the system is not reliable. And once you get behind, you can't get caught back up, and that's why we sat in here and froze for most of last winter. Couldn't get the second boiler consistently running, so it's still an issue. Longer range, you can see for this area that we're in now, the lower theater, there are some work that would need to be done if we were ever going to make this space more usable outside of just what we do now for meetings. And those are not in consideration at this point. I did not put it into the schedule, it's just for your information. Then finally, the waypoint, at this point, the structure is starting to reach that point where we need maintenance upgrades. The roof is, is one area of concern, we do have some leakage, so that's probably the priority. The other items, I think, can be prioritized accordingly, but I think the big, the big issue there is probably going to be that roof, which is a fairly large number. And then, as we discussed in previous meetings, and Elijah had asked for us to look into a replacement program for streetlights. We have roughly 20 lights that are either intermittently out or are out periodically in the downtown. Getting those completely replaced with poles, new LEDs, and making sure that we have all the wiring updated and correct is about $130,000. That is an eligible project for a grant, which is that Downtown Transportation Fund, which I had referenced there. At this point, we're proposing that we look at that project as a full grant project and see if we're successful. If not, then I would come back to you and ask you to do them in phases in smaller chunks so that it's not as significant on the tax rate. So that's just a brief overview of some of the projects that we've proposed. When we have the historic preservation folks come, they'll probably, they'll talk about their longer-term projects for the meeting house, so I did not include those in here tonight. When we have the library come, they've got a couple of considerations, I'm sure you'll hear from them as well when they come and talk to you. The other thing that I thought was important to bring back to you was to talk about just a proposed paving. This is from our pavement management plan that we've been following since roughly 2018, I think, 2017, somewhere in that neighborhood. And this is the year where some of our debt starts to drop. So you've historically been funding your pavement at roughly 400 to 450,000 a year. This would be a significant increase over that, excuse me, up to, potentially up to 877,000 based on our estimated numbers for paving. Last year, you paid $72 a ton for your asphalt. This year, we're estimating it at 80. And then your chip seal has gone up, but not as significantly as the, as the regular asphalt. And, and this project was the next potential project that was on the list, which these areas were, were the next ones identified as we followed that plan. So it's, it's a fairly large increase, but it could be offset, like I said, because you do have drops in your payments for your debt, your principal and interest, which we had given you that long-term debt schedule, which shows what your debt, principal and interest payments are going out through '23 and '24. So there is some room there as you maneuver forward, if you would like to continue with the paving, which people are appreciative. Obviously, they like their roads paved, they don't like to pay taxes. So there's always a balancing act between how much money are we willing to spend versus, you know, the condition of the roads that people drive, and then that creates criticism and comes back to the board and puts you, you know, under pressure. So. So a brief overview, I apologize for my voice, but at least wanted to get this in front of you for at least initial consideration, by no means are these final. But I just wanted, since these are the larger numbers, as Peter said, I thought it was important that we at least initiate that conversation before we get into talking about the operating budgets at our next scheduled meeting.
I noticed the paving schedule is all concentrated, almost with the exception of Rounds Road is all Saxon Drive again. What's, were they paying us or something?
He just, he did it in segments is really what he did.
I mean, we're leaving the village, the Bells Falls Village out of this thing. And I know we, two years ago, we told them they're going to do Center Street, and that hasn't been done yet.
No.
And we bumped that off last year because they want to do Saxon River. To me, I don't know.
We can certainly make adjustments. The pricing for this is better only because it's a long run. So you'll be able to get a contractor that won't, you won't be paying for as much mobilization and demobilization. And I jump a contractor to multiple scattered sites, they give you higher bid prices because it takes him time and energy to keep moving his men and his equipment. So I can certainly do that, Peter. I'd be more than happy to look at that, but that's why that was done in that way.
I know it does save us some money if we stay in one area, but you know.
I know it gives an impression that we're not being fair, but again, as we're following the longer-range plan, there are some substantial investments in the.
I know, I know the Pleasant Valley Road does need work out there, but, you know, it just seems that there's streets in Bells Falls that are as bad, if not worse, condition than that, that need some attention. So just thought I'd bring it up.
Okay.
In your packet too, there's a long list of SEDS information.
Right. We have quite a few projects in there from the prior year. At this point, Gary and I are not pulling anything from consideration. The ones that you see in the darker, bold were the ones that were considered priority projects. We'll be pushing for our projects to be considered as priority. Some of the ones that, you know, are more important to us, the train station, for example, is in there, as we had just talked about, the lower theater and this building is in there that we had just talked about. The Vilas Bridge is in there, as we've talked about in previous meetings. And again, Vilas is out in future years in terms of where we might have to, excuse me, have some local, some locals' expense for that. A couple other big ones that are still in there for us as well are Trails and Outdoor Recreation, which is what Gary was talking about with the Ursa Grants. And the redevelopment of Robbie Paper is still on there as well, which is a BFADC project, but obviously very important to the island and to trying to recreate some of our commercial and industrial tax base. So if there are any other projects that the board would like us to consider for inclusion, it's kind of a tight schedule. They want all of these in by the end of November, and they go through a process, and eventually they come out with a list that they then take forward and try to get funding.
Okay, moving along here, it's the final budget calendar.
So I went back and forth, excuse me, talked with the trustees. They would prefer to have their meeting on the 21st and asked if we could move ours, if we needed to have a budget adoption meeting to the 28th. So I have not done that. I wanted to talk to you first, so that's why I put this calendar together. So the only change would have been, we had originally talked about having an adoption meeting on the 21st. We would move that meeting to the following Tuesday, the 28th.
And as you mentioned, these are tentative anyway. If we make changes, these dates are going to, could possibly change.
Right.
You know, so it's just, it's a target, these are target dates, so just.
The dates and times are important because I share them with Back TV. We try to publicize it so people have an understanding, so they can come and participate. And also for every one of us trying to manage our own times around the holidays, it's not an easy thing to do. So I was hoping that if everybody's good with that, we'll work from that unless we need additional.
So that being said, is there any comment on how we want to do the budget this year? I don't know if we want to do it line by line like we've been doing in the past, but I know last year, we deviated quite a bit from that, just at the last minute, just said, come up with a level funded budget. So my suggestion, I guess, would be to let the officer, staff come up with a budget, bring it to us for review, and then we can pick it apart, see what we like, what we don't like, and send it back until we get a number we can all settle on, rather than sit here and spend days and days going over line by line to take $500 here, $100 there. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
I agree with you.
Well, we tried to break it into program areas too. Like if you notice that December 1st meeting, right, we've got the library, the opera house, the meeting house, and recreation. That's a fairly busy night, you know, trying to capture all of those and have the opportunity to have the departments and the different presentations and then have questions and feedback. Same thing with the 14th with general government. You know, there's certainly some things that we're going to propose with the listers that'll require some conversation. Recycling, Peter's made, mentioned that he has some concerns, would like to see us do some things in recycling. So there are some things that I think will require, you know, conversation amongst the board.
So you really think we're going to get this all done like that, huh?
That's what I said, everything's tentative. You're never going to know until you get to the point.
It's start at 5:30 and end, what, 11:30 midnight?
Well, that's why we wanted to try to do the 5:30 start.
That's what we used to do when we did the line by line stuff.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that any meeting that goes past nine o'clock, I have found to be completely worthless, just in my own experience.
Yeah.
So I'm sure most of you feel the same way. You know, once you get past three hours, you're not getting much done.
I think it'll be incredible if we can do that in three meetings.
The last time, we got almost a deadline that we had to have it done, so that's why we just said, you know, do this and.
There you go.
And we were lucky they did come up with a level funded budget, be as it may, but I think we got, we were helped with COVID because we didn't have to spend a lot of money that we anticipated to spend, especially in the, in the opera house.
Covid budgets were a little bit different.
So, so something to look forward to. All right, we're all done with the agenda. Let's go to approve, review and approve orders, bills and warrants.
Which I did bring down this evening.
They are here in front of me. I have signed them because I've looked at them on the internet and.
Since I failed the last two meetings.
I move that we approve the orders, bills and warrants.
Your second? Motion's made and seconded to approve the orders, bills and warrants. Comments, discussion? Sue, nothing?
No, all set.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to review and approve orders, bills and warrants. All those in favor would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Review agenda items for December 1st, 2021 meeting, one of its budget calendar you've got in front of you that's going to have some.
We'll have department presentations, which will, you know, again, I want to make sure that everybody's good with the 5:30 start time. I know it's a little bit hard to get everybody here, but hopefully we can get through the budget stuff and have time then for just a regular calendar. We'll try to keep it light after that.
I'd rather come early than stay late.
Oh, come on.
I'm with you. Bonnie, I'm with you on that one. So.
The only other thing is Rick wants us to have a discussion about cannabis.
We're going to do that as a joint.
I think we're going to put it, that's on the joint.
That's just going to go into the joint board?
That'll be on the joint agenda. We'll have that in the tax sales for the.
That's the next item, is review agenda items for the joint board, and that's going to be on there. There will be an executive session to discuss the manager's evaluation, which I have all the forms in front of me, the fun forms, nobody likes, but they're here. I will pass them along.
Oh, that's for the joint board meeting or?
Yeah, so we take them home, bring them back into the joint board, and I guess we will review them at that point.
Okay.
Because it's budget season and depending on how the review comes out, we may need to talk about money on the new contract and Josh Scott's contract runs out.
You're rid of this cold, you might need a manager.
In June of 2022, so we need to have the money in the budget to go forward. So that's why we're trying to get this done.
At what point, this is just a question. At what point would it be appropriate to talk about a raise in salary for staff? Some one particular member of staff?
At this board meeting, yeah.
Right.
At what, the joint board meeting?
Yeah, joint board, when we, because we'll have the executive session and.
Okay, that's when you talk about that?
As an aside, I have talked to Scott, he is willing to stay. First question is, why are you trying to get rid of me? And I said, well, not yet, but I mean, you know, he is willing to venture on, so that's a thought to keep in mind going forward, not to sway your evaluation. But the other thing I will mention on the application, you will see it says person completing form. In the past, we've had some people never signed it, and we had some nasty comments and things like that. And I think it's, if it's a one-on-one on situations, the manager at least gets a chance to look at some of these and if he wants to have a conversation with that particular person, say, well, what did I do to offend you or something?
Yeah.
At least it gives him a chance to see.
People weren't signing it?
A lot of them, none of them, they never signed it before, so, so, which I thought, I mean, if you're ashamed of fill-out evaluations, I mean, to me.
Right.
Yeah.
It should be something we could talk about.
It's just a courtesy for the person that you're reviewing, I mean, to me, but.
Of course.
Okay.
So we're supposed to take these papers?
Yes, you can have your packet.
Peter, can you email that to me, please?
Sue, I'll even drop you the whole packet off. I got it in my car right now. I dropped, picked them up. So I can drop it off at your house if you'd like, Brown.
If you'd like, I won't be home, but you can just leave it there, yeah.
Okay, I'll just drop it someplace. I'll find a place to hide it so you won't find it.
Yeah.
I'll do the same for Rick. I'll email him, probably leave it down to MSA. So, that being said, other business, Bonnie? Start with you. No? Elijah?
I, well, I guess the only thing I would say, that there's been a significant rise in COVID cases lately. I understand that Vermont is now the fifth highest rate of COVID infection in the United States. And I hear that there's talk of the legislature making an option for municipalities to adopt a mask mandate rather than going for a state mandate. So it's just something that, you know, might, you know, that they might decide to do, so.
Sue, anything?
Yeah, I'm just curious what's happened with the radar sign, and is that the one that's now on Atkinson Street?
That's one of them, correct, and that we have switched it now to the other side of Atkinson. And then when it's done there, I'll be putting it out, starting in Lower Bartonsville. So, yes.
Okay.
I have to figure out how to do the downloading, that's the next challenge, to download the data. So it's.
Is that solar powered or is it just battery powered?
It does have a solar power, but it mostly uses battery.
Okay.
So, but yeah, so I know we had committed to the folks on Lower Bartonsville, and there was two other spots, and I have them written down upstairs, so we'll get it out there.
All right.
And then once I get the data, I'll bring it back to the board, and we can certainly have a conversation, how you would like to either approach the sheriff potentially for targeted enforcement. And we'll tell you, the sheriff did raise his rates for all of his services to communities that currently have contracts pretty substantially. So that's something we could talk as we go through the budget as well.
Well, the data you'd have right now is the Bells Falls Police Department's job, if it's only in Atkinson Street.
Right, but I'm saying, if I, by the data that we collect out, when we put it out at Lower Bartonsville and at the other locations, it'll give us speed data, number of cars, time of day, that type of thing. And then the question will be, do we want to then go back and do a contract with the sheriff to say, can we do targeted enforcement based on this data? And if it is, then it's X amount per hour for an officer for under 20 hours, you know, it's, there's, there's breakdowns. But it went up pretty substantially since we last spoke.
Okay, I have nothing, so I guess there's no need for executive session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn for the evening.
Your second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're out of here, folks. Thanks.